No problem, Dan. No problem.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. It is Tuesday, September 2nd, 2014, and the time is 9:01. Everybody stand for the pledge.
The pledge is to define the United States of America in just a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bledsoe.
Here.
Ms. Riggin.
Present.
Mr. King.
Here.
Ms. Russ.
Present.
And Ms. Neal.
Present.
We have no public hearings. We need approval of the minutes of August 18th, 2014.
So move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
And Mr. King.
Yes. Presentations to the commissioners. We'll move on to contracts or agreements for approval. Implementation of GIS services between Delaware County and the Muncie Sanitary District. Kyle?
Good morning, Kyle.
Good morning. This interloco agreement is something that I approached the Muncie Sanitary District in order to secure outside funding to help offset my departmental budget to keep them council from having to cut staff. So the interloco agreement is just basic services that what my office provides to the sanitary district in exchange for $20,000 worth of funding per year.
First of all, it's more than basic service. It's a tremendous service, I think, what your GIS department offers. I know there was some misunderstanding. I don't think some of the council members knew about this contract or this effort that you were doing prior to their reduction in that.
Right. Yeah, I was unaware that there was going to be cuts last week, so I was going to present it at my budget hearing, which is a separate game.
We were too.
Yeah, we were as well. I know we had talked to Kyle. We're looking at other things, some other avenues to help fund this position as well. This is Kyle's office obviously does a lot, not only for county government, city government, Muncie Sanitary District, but kind of York towns and other towns. When you get online and you see the beacon and all the maps and stuff, these things come from the gentleman right there. So we have a few other little things we'd like to check out, I think, before we would approve this contract, but we definitely want to. I would put a motion on the floor that I fully support this contract and would like to entertain and discuss it or approve it maybe at the next meeting.
I'm happy to second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
And Mr. King.
Thanks, Kyle. We'll continue research in a little bit.
Commissioners, they're saying in the back they can't hear you, but I can't turn that up any further than A or it'll be.
Right.
Okay. So, please.
Next, we have the Humana Renewal Contract. Nancy, is she here?
Nancy Larson, Human Resources Director. The Humana contract needs to be renewed. It is going from a 2.08 to a 2.8 percent increase, and this is for administrative fees through the Affordable Healthcare Act.
And everything else?
Everything else is consistent, yes.
And if they, it says September.
September 1st, and they're fine with us turning it in today.
I'll move for approval of the Humana contract.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Have any discussion? Denise, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
And Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we have the Workplace Health Partner Proposal for additional.
Mr. President, if we could, this has not been altered yet. We were looking from going from an additional 10 hours to 6 hours, and we've not had a chance to rewrite this agreement, so I would just hold off on that.
We'll move to the addendum to prescribed contract between Delaware County and PSC Associates for annual adjustments and reassessment. James?
Good morning, Chief, Carmichael County Assessor. What this is, is omitting the digital photography from a previous contract by $180,000 and clarifying the data entry duties that was in that contract. So we clarified that and will no longer be doing digital photography at this time, but may add it in at a later date.
I'll move for approval of the contract.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? Denise, call the roll, please.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
And Mr. King.
Yes. I'll do it for the contracts and agreements. We have no appointments, no table of business. We'll move on to ordinance for second reading. Ordinance to amend the Delaware County Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance. Ordinance number is going to be 2014-020. Martha?
Yes, this is a rezoning request to go from the R1 Residence Zone to the BV Variety Business Zone, and the intended purpose is for mini warehouse storage with some allowance for outside storage as well. That's the variety business category. And the Plan Commission heard this in public hearing at their August meeting and returned a favorable 9 to 0 recommendation to the commissioners. And the purchaser of the property, Tom Parker, is also present in case you have any other questions. I believe in the case analysis that you get, you can see that there is a mix of zoning in the surrounding area, but there is some variety business zoning in the surrounding area as well.
And the storage is going to be outside toward the rear of the facility as well. Might be a reflection as well, so it was a favorable recommendation.
And down the road, there'll be more and more?
Yes. Literally, yeah.
I'll move for approval of ordinance number 2014-020.
Second.
Have a motion for approval and a second. Discussion? Denise, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
And Mr. King.
Move for ordinances for our first reading. We have ordinance number 2014-014. Delaware County creating a fund for the Delaware County Prosecuting Attorney for the deposit of funds derived from federal equitable sharing program.
Good morning, Eric.
Good morning, Eric Kaufman, Chief Deputy Prosecutor. As everyone's aware, the county council has advised county office holders and offices to reduce their budgets and take certain cuts. In preparation for these cuts, we've examined different areas of the law in which the prosecutor's office can bring some revenue in to help fund the office in terms of buying computers, training, those sorts of things, office equipment. And the first ordinance that we proposed is a fund that would create, or the ordinance creates a fund for monies that we receive from the federal government pursuant to the federal equitable sharing program. And what that is, Indiana law provides that certain monies and assets seized from criminals can go to into federal court and go through the federal process of forfeiture. And then at the end of the process, if in fact forfeiture is ordered by a federal judge, the U.S. Department of Justice then provides police departments, prosecutor's offices, et cetera, with a portion of those funds. We just need a place to put it so that we can utilize the money for the various things as listed in the legal ordinance. And if possible, we would ask to, I've been told that there is money waiting for us, so I would ask to suspend the regular rules so we don't have to go through a second reading.
I'll move for introduction of ordinance 2014-014.
Second.
Have a motion for introduction and a second and further discussion. Denise, call the roll, please.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
I'll move for suspension of ordinance 2014-014.
Second.
Have a motion to suspend the rules and a second. Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Motion to approve 2014-014.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Denise, call the roll, please.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we have ordinance number 2014-015, Delaware County for the deposit of funds derived from the seizures of assets for the violation of certain criminal statutes.
This ordinance is similar to the last one, although it deals with forfeiture cases that are handled in state courts, meaning in the circuit courts across the street. And this is for funds that a judge would order forfeited pursuant to law, and then a portion of which is then ordered by the judge to go either to the police department or multiple police departments as well as the prosecutor's office to help reimburse the cost of prosecution. So I'd ask support for that ordinance as well as to suspend the regular rules.
What is the name of this thing? I'm searching in quickly and I'm not seeing it.
Actually, in state court, the money goes into the general fund.
Oh, okay.
So it goes into the general fund to be used by the prosecuting attorney to buy equipment. So the fund's already there, that making general.
Okay, I got you.
I'll move for introduction of ordinance 2014-015.
Second.
Have a motion for introduction and a second. Denise, can you call the roll?
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Move for suspension of 2014-015.
Second.
Have a motion for suspension and a second. Denise, can you call the roll?
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
And move for approval of 2014-015.
Second.
Have a motion for approval and a second. Denise, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
And Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Rhonda, I'll get those copies to, a copy of.
Next, we have ordinance number 2014-018 to amend ordinance number 2011-016, the Public Health Vaccine Fund.
Good morning, James.
Good morning. Jamie Vane, Administrator of the Health Department.
Yes, welcome back, Jamie.
Thank you. You guys should have the rule amendment that I've provided. We have a number of costs coming up for some equipment associated with vaccines. We wanted to revise the wording of the old fund to allow for us to include those expenses.
Appreciate the invitation to do this as well as saving us money this year compared to last as well using the old vendor. This is going to be a savings to us.
Well, this, Mr. Bledsoe, this issue gears for the funding of some servers. The vaccinations, speak to that as well.
Yeah, you would.
For the flu vaccine.
Yes, you would. You hit on that.
Yeah, our department is going to provide flu vaccinations for the county, basically just the cost of the flu vaccine. My nursing director's been working for a couple of weeks, making a lot of phone calls, trying to track down the best price. We currently have an order placed actually through Henry County Health Department to get us a good price to start the process, and then we'll have an order placed through a vendor that will get us additional vaccine should you choose to expand that.
That's problematic over the last couple of years.
We don't have a date, any date yet.
No date yet. We're working with HR to try to get them set.
Riggin.
I'll move for introduction of 2014-018.
Second.
Have a motion for introduction and a second. Denise, call the roll, please.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
And Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have ordinance number 2014-019, establish a meal allowance for precinct workers.
I have to enter this ordinance.
If you'd like, Steve. Just rehash.
And we just wait until it's time for this to prove.
Good morning, Steve. Steve Craycraft, Delaware County Clerk. Again, as the last meeting, we are just asking for an establishment of meal money for the precinct workers. Used to, we provided three meals a day, $7 each meal. We decided at the last training, about unanimous decision, people rather have the monies and provide their own meal than us hire caterers, so it's a good time to get out of the catering business. And so we're asking that this be adopted, and we just pay the, each poll worker $21 per election day and let them provide their own food.
Appreciate that. Appreciate Sean giving us ordinance together.
Thank you, Sean.
Introduction of ordinance number 2014-019.
Second.
Have a motion for introduction and a second. Discussion? Denise, call the roll.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
And Mr. King.
Yes. That'll do it for ordinances for first reading. We have a resolution for approval for opposing expansion of federal control under the Clean Water Act.
Mr. President, this was, been brought to our attention via email and at a member from the Drainage Board. This is a, it's a proposed rule that would define the scope of waters protected under the Clean Water Act and basically give the EPA more jurisdiction over our waterways that's in the community. This new proposed rule to expand the waters to fall under their jurisdiction is silly as the septic tank tax, which is dead by the way. Right now, the way the drainage is set up, if there's a problem in a field or a particular area, a complaint will call typically a commissioner, and we'll send either the highway and/or the surveyor out to try to identify, one, is it a legal drain? Two is a legal ditch that's under the county highway department's purview. And then by doing so, we can normally, most generally, unless it's a new construction, get busy and correct the problem. This proposed rule would not only be a burden to that, it would be a burden to the farmers getting rid of those types of waters from their fields. Essentially, this would be a permitting process to allow us to apply for permit to address any of these issues, even though we're liable for these particular drain problems. It would extend the time that we would have to work on these drains, plus go through permitting process, which obviously would be a burden on county government, whether it be the highway or the surveyor's office to remedy these situations. So we've been asked, as long as the Farm Bureau is lobbying, to let our thoughts be known about this proposed rule and then do hopes that it's not passed. So I would, that's the gist of this proposed Clean Water Act proposal. So this is just a resolution opposing the expansion of this proposed Clean Water Act. So I would like to move for approval of 2014-037.
Second.
Have a motion for approval and a second. Do we have any discussion? Denise, call the roll, please.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
And Mr. King.
And for the record, the Drainage Board voted unanimously to as well as to support this.
I think our waterways are getting cleaned with the first act. I don't think we need to add to it.
That will do it for resolutions. Before we move on to the department heads and elected officials, Alder Judy Rust asked if she could open bids for the tax systems. Do we have to do it at this time?
We put this out to bid to three vendors and two responded. This is from Government Utilities Technology Service, and this one is the technical proposal. Yeah. No, this hasn't been done.
That's several.
This one is. Technical proposal for the tax system.
Will you guys speak loud so they can hear you?
Okay. After I quit making the noise, I'll repeat. It's hard to hear. Okay, this is from Government Utilities Technical Service. It was, they're from Thorn Town, Indiana, and this is the request or proposal and the response, and came in two packages. Jim, you want to come and assist us in looking at these to find where the, where the bid, actual bid numbers are? There is no cover.
Well, that's a second proposal.
All right. I know. We need some background.
Too bad they did a little slide there.
What do we want this to say?
I believe it's in the, it's in the smaller packet there. That would, there should have been a smaller envelope.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
There were three packages, not two. Okay, there you are. All right.
Okay, this is a proposed due schedule, and let me see here. It includes software, software installation, training, conversion, and server hardware, hardware installation. No, it does not include that, I'm sorry. So it's software, software installation and conversion for a total of $154,250 and additional yearly support service and maintenance of $48,750. And then some additional fees for test environment provided at no charge the first year, and then there's additional charge per year after that of $6,000. And a three-year payment arrangement.
A three-year payment arrangement.
Two payments of $61,700 and a final payment of $30,850.
This is from Low Associates. I don't have your address. From South Bend.
What's it called?
Low.
L-O-W.
Okay, so this is a contract, total contract amount is $239,000. Includes unlimited users, real estate assessed value, mobile home assessed value, personal property assessed value, OCR line, property projects, data export, tax history retention, and remote connection software. Looks like the annual fee is $62,676. The total project cost for this bid is $378,250. Doesn't break down the payment schedule, though.
So the $62,000 would be a maintenance type.
That's an annual maintenance charge.
Annual maintenance, and that being for three or five or three and seven.
Jim, I have a question. Would you take the podium, please? And both of these were the bids of just certain segments. It sounds like this last one's added a few extra things.
Well, in the RFP, there was requirements that they had to meet, and until we go through and see if they answered those and follow those instructions, we're not really going to know, but that's, they had instructions of what they were requested to respond to the RFP.
So until you get back with us, we don't know if the first one did as much as.
Also, there's only, is there just three that's capable of doing this to save the Indians, correct?
There's three in our current, and our current.
And our current.
Yes, and we did not ask for a bid from them.
Okay.
And what kind of maintenance fee do we pay now?
$60,000.
$60,000. And also, the monies to purchase this, we've put that in place, or?
Well, that, I see Jones, or Mike Jones, has a heart attack out there.
Yeah.
We had had a meeting with Judy, John Door, Jim Fluke, and, I don't know, several others, but looking at leaving the Kish software at this point and going to another vendor. So we asked them to go out for the RFP because of the problems that we have. That being said, we do have, in our edit plan, you know, there's some monies that we have for IT, software, hardware, computer maintenance that we thought we could further identify and take some of that and pay for this and get this up and running, because I do believe we're under a time schedule, so to speak.
That was my next question.
So the plan would be to fund this out of that, providing that the payment and everything meets the bid specs.
And we know that'll improve things around here tremendous, correct?
We're hoping so.
Yes.
Well, there better be.
I'll take, make a motion that we take these under advisement.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Denise, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
And Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
We will now move to department heads and elected officials. Do we have any department heads like to get up and speak?
I just want to touch base on, touch base with you about our second quarter for the clinic. They did give us some amazing numbers. Our first quarter was 30% participation with employees, and we've gone from 30 to 44% with the employees' participation. And spouse went from 19 to 27%. So we are definitely making a big change in utilizing the clinic. Just want to give you a heads up. And then on Saturdays, they're talking about eliminating Saturday visits because it's not really being utilized like we were hoping, and we may take those hours and merge it into the week to open up more hours for employees.
That's why we delayed this contract. It still says 10 hours. We're wanting to do the Saturday hours and then after use of the Sundays.
Nancy, have you thought about doing a little survey amongst employees, what they would like to see, because I hear the morning's very popular.
Tara will be doing that for the fourth, or for the third quarter. She's sending out an electronic survey for the employees to let us know what their interests are.
Thank you.
Eric?
Mike Scroggins, County Sheriff. I wanted to report back to the commissioners. As you know, we're having problems with the chillers over in the Justice Center, which is causing a problem with the airflow up in the jail. In the interim, until we can figure out what we're going to do with that, I've purchased four big barn vans. Got five total. We already have one. Using the fan to circulate the air and lowering the recreation doors at night, we're keeping the jail area as cool as we can. And during the day, the doors stay out because all it does is let the heat in, and we're circulating the cool air where it is coming up, getting it through the box. The box, or where we have the problem, is questioned back in O Block, which that'll be corrected with the new chillers. But that's the preventative action I've taken as far as keeping the air. But that's, uh, the preventative action I've taken as far as keeping the airflow and the temperature under control up there so we can figure out what we're going to do.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thanks for your report.
On that, go ahead, Janet.
I'm talking on something different. Okay. Janet Davis, Veteran Service Officer. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of the monthly stand down that's coming up in September twenty-sixth. Uh, it's for the homeless and nearly homeless veterans. By nearly homeless, we mean anybody that's finding themselves going from place to place to trying to find a place to sleep at night. Um, there's going to be, uh, food provided there for them and also, uh, medical, uh, checkups and clothing and haircuts and, um, and hopefully it'll be one of the bigger ones that we've had. They, uh, they hope to get over a hundred this, this time.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
I'd like to bring up, under, under the department heads, elected officials. I know we've had, we've had some questions arise from the council members. And Mike, this is just to give you a general idea that you can take through your budget hearings. But, uh, you know, a couple of things that we've got going on that commissioners have done, uh, let's talk about the, uh, the chillers. You know, the buildings, we try to maintain these buildings best we can. I know over the years we used our any-day fund money. We've used some other, uh, funds that have been available, controls, door locks and such, uh, air hammers on this side. We did, uh, the MRSC study came back and I, I think there's been no bones about it that all three commissioners support moving forward this, this, this study or this, this project at a tune of
Three point three.
Three points, three million dollars. Uh, I, to avoid any kind of misunderstanding, so to speak, we have in our edit plan enough to be able to afford a partial payment of that bond money. And a fifteen-year bond, I think we've discussed in general conversation to supplement a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of edit money to provide for these necessary repairs that we need on both buildings. Keep in mind, uh, this bond, the first payment wouldn't be due until 2016. If the county council would support and fund the rest of this bond payment, which would have been about the exact match, so to speak, uh, we would be able to do three, three-point million dollars worth of repairs and get some of these stuff done and not have to worry about quite some time. These are things that's going to have to be done now anyway. We've got three chillers over there immediately replaced right now. We've been kind of waiting to see where the council's direction is going to take us with MRSCO passing resolution allowing this to happen. If not, we're going to be out about at least a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand on three chiller, two chillers alone. Uh, so that, that being said, I think it's, it's, it's a good thing for us to, we would further define the edit plan and amend the edit plan to take care of this. But we have, one project was, uh, building, upgrade, maintenance, bond payments on upgrades. We put six hundred thousand, that was to allow for us to absorb some of MRSCO bond. Uh, not the entire bond payment. I would not feel comfortable recommending to the commissioners that we, we foot a two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, uh, annual payment for fifteen years out of that. I just think it would restrict edit and the use of what we could further do. The, uh, going back to the software, I feel comfortable when we have IT software project, forty-eight, six hundred thousand dollars. Both of these projects were built in to try to absorb some of this stuff, knowing that we were going to have, have to do these upgrades. So I feel comfortable that we can help the council out in just over one point two million dollars. In fact, you know, over several years, just on a county general fund. You know, since I've been commissioner, we, we've reduced our workforce and consolidated departments every year. And it's a true, several hundred thousand dollars of true cuts, something we never get back. So, uh, Mr. Jones, I'm hoping that you could let the council know we're willing to do this kind of stuff out of that. I don't support a request to, uh, fund, pay for house prisoners out of county. I think we're looking at the day's runs. I mean, Mike's done a good job keeping those numbers further below than what we have had with, especially with the drug problem that we're having now. These numbers have dropped substantially with the programs. I mean, we're making headway on that. I would rather much see the edit dollars used and stuff that, that will help the upgrade of this, with these, uh, these buildings, the upgrade to help people with their tax software and that kind of stuff. So I don't know if you guys.
Well, um, it's just a matter of time too. Mike, we could kind of Band-Aid these chillers, I think Rick said for about a hundred and eighteen, but we can have a new one for a hundred and fifty thousand. So we really need for council to call a special meeting to pass the resolution and get the bonding. We've got the money, the banks are willing to loan, but there's forty-five days and we're running out of time. But, um.
The one thing that, uh, I know from talking to people upstairs, that people look at that as an eight-hour building like this office, this building, and it's twenty-four, seven, and those, when I was talking to Charlie, we were up there, uh, and it was about one in the morning last weekend and one of the inmates had knocked the fire extingu, or a fire sprinkler head off. And then we're also dealing with the heat. Those chillers run twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week because we've got three hundred people up there. Friday, we, we had two, two thirty-five in-house and twenty out of county and Jay County and fourteen on GPS. And over the weekend, I'm only up to, right now, two forty in-house and I've got seventeen on GPS. So it, it's bouncing around between fourteen to seventeen and I'm trying to get it north of seventeen. I've talked to, uh, the judges and they're willing to work with me in loosening up the matrix. Lana Jordan, the Director of Delaware County Community Corrections, uh, she's got a different matrix than what I use. I had a really, really conservative matrix starting this out because we've never done this as a sheriff's office. I want to make sure that we got off on the right foot. So I'm going to expand that as much as I can with the personnel that I have. Right now, I don't, I don't see a ceiling on it because the deputies are, if you will, my case managers that will go out and check if there is an initial issue and arrest and bring back those perpetrators. So, um, you know, we're saving anywhere between twelve to eighteen thousand dollars a month, depending on, you know, what that total is each day. Um, you know, twelve thousand, if it's down around seventeen and, you know, jumps up in the higher numbers, then we get, saving more money. Now, um, basically, we're, you know, saving half of what we would, the seventeen would be obviously up in Jay County. And then there's four on the community corrections. So, you know, right there is twenty-one people that might have to have out of county on top of the twenty that we do. And that's not talking about one hundred and sixty-seven or more that we always have on pre-trial home detention. So I, I'm going to continue to expand my plan. Uh, Ms. Jordan is, you know, gracious enough to help me with this issue. But the people that I have in-house, uh, is still, you know, you ever realize even though that number's low, that's still twenty more than what the total inmate population's supposed to be. And I've got to manage the chillers and, you know, the conditions are paramount.
Yeah.
We can deal with the population accordingly, but we, the people we have in-house are really going to take care of the conditions. And that's why I want to let you know they've got the fans and the mopping and messing, waiting on the chillers and doing what we need to do to take care of those.
Well, we can have it in here if we get to go. I'd like to also touch something else about what council did last week on the bailiff. We want to guarantee our employees here that we will have security here. You'll work with us on people.
What do you mean by that? Because it is going to affect security.
Well, the word was that two bails got, you know, eliminated.
What's my plan? Is that what you're asking her?
But I just want you to secure that we're going to have security.
Terrifyingly, she's asking, will there still be security downstairs?
No.
There will not be.
No. By ordinance, I'm only required to provide security for the court. I'll be moving the security up here on the third floor to protect four D court. I don't have the personnel to provide the force to, uh, to the entire building.
So just, well, I, I know third floor was very worried about it.
Because I, I was, if, well, let me say this. If I get, if my part-time money doesn't get count, my part-time money got cut along with losing two bails. I was going to supplement the two bails with part-time money, but I lost part-time money also. I have to provide security for the Justice Center and I have to provide security for that court. I want to provide security for both buildings, but wanting and requirements, the requirements take the personnel first. And I know I don't have enough personnel to run that security point down there.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll run it when the court's in session.
I guess we'll have to look at Plan B.
Pardon me?
We'll have to look at Plan B.
Let me know what Plan B is.
When we get out of here, I'll.
Share Plan B?
We'll come up with a Plan B.
All right.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Well, and Larry, on the MRSCO, like he was talking about, you know, dealing with AM, you know, there is going to be a cost savings to the county with MRSCO.
Guaranteed.
And from talking with AM, even paying, the council's part of, uh, the bond payment, uh, I believe they're saying it would still be a hundred thousand and two hundred thousand dollars ahead after paying that payment with, uh, with the cost savings.
The, I've not seen the new bank numbers. The, the proposed numbers, uh, were showing that, there's a guaranteed savings of a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. The bond payment, if we went with the full project, three point one, was going to be about two hundred and seventy-eight, so say two hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year for fifteen years. With the guaranteed one twenty-four savings on that, if we supplement it to one fifty, the one twenty-four would be absorbed, the savings into the general fund, which we're already funding that now in your utilities and maintenance account line items. It's, the monies, you've got a line item now for, the savings will come, reflect out of those line items. As well as, the highway garage had some lighting and some things done out there. We would ask that the highway through the MBH, the Q and Bridge Fund, MBH funds help figure out that portion and pay, you know, the, the portion of their repair or actual new construction on that lighting and stuff into the bond payment, which would further reduce the county general's obligation. Does that make sense, Tom? I might be losing something.
Mike Scroggins, County Sheriff. Commissioner Rigan, I, I want to follow up on what you were talking about with the door security. So everybody knows how serious I am about security. I went to one of my discretionary funds and put a new security system in this building. Now, uh, I'm going to do the same thing at the Justice Center. It's going to come out of one of my discretionary funds. Um, the, I have talked to Commissioner King and Commissioner Bledsoe about this. It's all about cooperation and working together. I've got the money, it falls under security, even though it's, you know, actually a building issue. The security system over here was way past its shelf life and we were having issues. So I got that, did that one first. That one's newer, I'll replace it as soon as I recoup the money I spent on this. It was about seventeen thousand dollars, I believe. So I'm all about Plan B, but I have to take care of my obligations according to statute.
Sure.
Look the courts and then I'll deal with.
Well, I was up on third floor and they, they were concerned up there, so.
As it should be. In today's world, we need security in both buildings.
Yes, sir.
But I've got to take care of my statutory obligations first.
And, uh, before we move on, I do have something that I would like to say. And this doesn't go towards you, Mike, this goes toward another one that sits on the council. That puts something on social media about the commissioners, uh, don't realize the situation that you guys are going through, Mike, that we are doing nothing to help. If you listen to Commissioner Bledsoe today, we're doing a lot to help out of edit fund to free money up for the council out of the general fund. I sat on the council for four years, two of my years I was president. My first year as I come in as president, I was told that we had to cut, I believe it was over three million dollars, Judy. We come in, uh, it was very hard for seven people to come up with how many people to cut and what to do. It was put on my shoulders as president, it's my first year to come in and figure out how many people was going to be cut out of each department. On my shoulders. I come in with the list, we sit down, I went over the list and the only thing the other six members had to do was vote yes or no. To me, it was a slap in the face for one of the council members to put that on social media that we don't understand. Because I think I understand more than any of them. Because I had to do the cuts at that time. And I think we did the cuts within the first three to four months of that year. Sitting up here as a commissioner now, I still understand. That's the reason why we're sitting up here right now, doing the cuts. And as a commissioner, all three of us, we've sat down and we've taken jobs from full-time to part-time. We've worked with Mike Jones on, on some other things to help out. Maybe this other council member doesn't understand or maybe he doesn't know. But I can tell you, when I sat on the council for those two years as president, I never heard one word out of this council member, not unless it was to the newspaper or again on social media or sitting down here in a chair with a smirky smile on his face like everything was funny. He even did it when we cut people. Those things, I, I just, I can't bear and I don't like. You know, we're all given a job to do and we're voted in to do the job. And I was at the council meeting last week where they made their cuts. And once again, if I wanted to make cuts, I would have been the council member that spoke up and I would make the motions and I would have been making the seconds. That did not happen with this one. But he turned around and wanted to go on social media and bash us. You know, I would rather for a person to come to me and talk to me than go on social media and make derogatory comments toward these commissioners that sit up here right now that, you know, we're working to the, to do the best we can. And Mr. Jones, I understand the cuts. I sat in your spot. I totally understand. That's the reason why we try to work with the council. That's the reason why we're doing some of the stuff out of the edit plan to help you guys. That's the reason why we look at other options to save money, you know, maybe not this year, but in prior years. That's one of the reasons why we sit up here and we put, uh, the clinic together, was to save money for, uh, the county. You know, but once again, and I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but to me, to sit there and read that from a council member, it was a slap in the face to me. You know, we're trying to help and do the best we can, just like you guys are. And to have a council member come up and, you know, post crap like that, you know? But that's, that's just the way I feel. I don't know how Commissioner Rigan feels or Bledsoe, but I won't go on social media and bash any of the council members. I just, I can't do it. I don't know if it's because the election's going on right now, that it's time to bash people. But, you know, we're trying to work together, not tear things apart.
I don't read it.
I haven't read it.
But I do know our county policies, kind of, I think if you take that and utilize that, even when you're not here through the non-working hours, would apply. I would like to bring up a couple of things that, uh, that I think we need to address. I would like to go on to the clinic, so I guess to offer an opinion on the health employee insurance. I mean, we made a, a small incremental increase last year on the contribution rate across the board without any grievances filed. That brought in, you know, a little bit of extra monies, receipts come in to help pay. The clinic, we knew at that point was going to cost us, uh, the operation of the clinic's about a four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollar a year, uh, bill. Uh, but it's working. If you look at what, what we paid Anthem last year and the overruns of, we, the lack of overruns on Anthem, we got a five hundred thousand, some, five hundred some odd thousand dollars back because we had a set payment per month. We changed that to real claims cost. We're on a roll here to, if we continue the year out as the projections, to have nine hundred thousand dollars into the good of the insurance account, I believe from the last report from MAC. Well, kudos to the employees that are using that. The utilization rate being forty percent was something that we probably thought we would see probably in eighteen months. We've seen it six months. So we're not only paying for the cost of clinic, the employees by using this, they're further controlling those increases of costs. Therefore, that, that, it's working. So to have that type of positive balance at the year end, I think is, uh, So to have that type of positive balance at the year end, I think is to say, thanks for utilizing the clinic and hopefully it'll continue to grow. Another idea that I think we need to look at along that line that in fact does benefit is the public defender board. Mr. Jones and Mr. President, I would think that we need to have some sort of a study committee, possibly a president or vice president.
See what other counties are doing.
See what's doing, a president of council or does it need from a council, the presidents, the prosecutors, the public defender board, whoever needs to be on this and do a study is, why are we doing what we need to be doing or we need to do something different? I look at Eric out there, I know what he makes a year and he doesn't have a private practice, and the time that he puts in, and my hat's off. And we have public defenders that are able to practice law and still make more than half of what Eric makes out there right now. And I, as a, it's hard to understand, I've had conversations with some judges and some other people that's been public defenders, there's different ideas out there, there's just something that we, I think we need to do immediately and have somebody designate these members to look at this, to see are we, do we need to go to a full-time public defender's offices such as a prosecutor's office? I don't know, but I think these things need to be explored and maybe further reduce the cost of what we're putting into that. Because ultimately, a big part of our budget's a lot we just can't control when it stops somebody being arrested, going through the system. Twenty-five million dollars, a lot of that goes towards stuff none of us can control in here, so. Tomorrow at the budget hearings, like I said, I just, I think we're doing what we need to do as commissioners to help relieve some of this stuff that's been going on and that we need to have done. I'm going to stop at there.
I was going to say, will let President King select such a committee?
That's my amendment, yeah.
Yeah, because really, we pay more for public defenders than what we do for our prosecutor's office, so.
I mean, we don't want to cut the service, but we just see what other people...
Oh, no, we just make sure we got the most effective service.
Don't do me.
Mr. Jones?
Have I got a three-minute left?
Yeah.
You've got a ten-minute left.
Oh, I got, you have, you brought up several subjects and I'm going to try to remember to address each one of those. First of all, the county council as a whole tries hard to stay out of personnel business, tries hard to stay out of areas that doesn't fall within their purview. We deal with the numbers and that's all we have to deal with. And frankly, the revenues of the county through the last five or six years has decreased dramatically in the millions and millions and millions of dollars. Thus far, the public hasn't saw any decrease in services that's recognizable to my knowledge, so I think everybody worked hard together to continue providing those services. Now, having said that, I mentioned in a previous meeting recently that, thanking commissioners for what they had done. I know they have earmarked edit monies to help county general and we appreciate that. And I said at the time, we'd be looking for some more help. And I'll say again, the commissioners have helped. We appreciate that. Every office in the building and the departments and county government have all helped. That was then, this is now, and we need more help. At our, at our last regular meeting, we started addressing the shortfall that we're going to be experiencing next year through reductions in personnel and reductions in budgets, none of which is taken lightly. When you affect people's lives and livelihoods, it means a lot to me, I know. And we're going to start our public hearing today at eleven thirty and we'll start our preliminary meeting with the county elected official department heads today, and that will go through the end of tomorrow. And then we'll get into the meat of doing what else needs to get done to correct where we're headed. When it comes to the request for AMERESCO, James and I, Larry and I, the council and I, we've all had really quite a bit of discussion. I've met with AMERESCO a few times and I've gone on record and saying I'm not opposed at all to being proactive and reducing costs, and I still support that. At the time, and I'm going to speak on the council's behalf, I believe I can in this, it was simply, we were so focused on the budget and doing what was necessary because of the decreased revenues, that it was really tough to justify committing three-plus million dollars going forward as an additional burden on the budget. I think there's still room to talk about AMERESCO and their services. I'm not sure in total what it would compass. I know the chillers are a primary concern and frankly, if those things fix, we need to move forward to fix those.
No, we actually need new ones.
Well, that's, yes, that's fine. I wouldn't recommend repairing those. And then perhaps that could be, that portion could be taken out of AMERESCO and reduce that cost, I'm not sure, but, but I said at the last meeting, I'm willing to discuss that. I think the council is. Again, right now, we're going to, we're going to do what we need to do in this budget and then we'll get into that very quickly. And hopefully within the next couple of weeks, we can, we can address and come to a conclusion This is, this is going to be a pretty difficult set of budget hearings, I think. We'll be going probably more in depth, maybe than what we have been, simply because of the situation we find ourselves in. It's unfortunate in light of the, of the good job that the sheriff and the court system and the prosecutor's office and the, frankly, the public defenders and the Delaware County community corrections, all working together helping to decrease costs associated with housing inmates. And as much as the good things are happening, the commissioners have requested, there was two hundred fifty thousand dollars in house inmates last year, and that's increased to a request of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. And as much as I understand, we've got to do what we've got to do, it's going to be difficult to find the money to do that. So we'll just have to get into the discussion and see where that leads us. But Larry and James and Sheriff, the council is more than happy. In fact, we encourage more communication with the commissioners as we work forward towards all these issues.
Well, Mike, I can say when I started on the council, our budget was twenty-nine million dollars. I believe this year, you guys are talking, it's twenty-one, twenty-two million, somewhere around there. So I mean, for people to say that the county hasn't cut anything, yes, we have.
Oh, what's your minute?
We've cut quite a bit. I mean, every year, when you're looking at your circuit breaker coming in, three, four million dollars that you guys have to cut, yeah, service are, they're going to start going down. You know, and a lot of people, and a lot of people say that when they voted that referendum for the tax caps, that that didn't hurt. Yes, it did. And whoever says that didn't hurt, you put them right in front of me and I'll call them a liar, because that did hurt.
I appreciate you saying that. Of course, we're all going to get flak for saying that out loud, but the fact of the matter is...
Won't be the first time I'm taking any flak money about anything.
Over, over probably in the neighborhood of twenty-plus million dollars in the last several years since they've been implemented. And I keep going back to that because, you know, in local government, when you're talking money and reductions and things like that, that drives a lot of things, drives emotions and drives hard feelings and everything else. One thing that I keep going back to in my own mind is, I don't blame a department head for wanting the resources to do their job. I don't want them to be mad at me or the council because we've got X amount of dollars to spread over the whole county budget. I go back to the root cause of what our problems are. That was when we implemented the tax caps into our constitution, in addition to losing the industry that we had, it was nearly a death blow. But I think we've rebounded somewhat and we're going to continue working in that direction. So I appreciate all of the commissioners.
Thanks, Mike.
Mike, anything else? And I would say one last thing too, Mike, because I know there's been some discussion about the employees paying more money on their insurance and stuff. I don't take the insurance. We signed an ordinance that we wouldn't take the insurance, because personally, I couldn't see me having my other job plus doing this, having the insurance and then putting it back on the county employees. Me personally, I would give the insurance up if I was on it as a council member to help that, you know, the employees, we don't put something else back on them because the longevity's gone now, correct?
Correct.
A portion, I believe a portion of their pay with the longevity might go out. I just can't see making them pay more on the insurance.
Okay, well, I appreciate what you're saying. Simply remember, we are driven, we're driven by that number, the bottom line.
Right. Can I ask a question? The only, the only thing I'm saying, and I know you, you know, but all I'm saying is, I can't take something from the employees when we keep taking from them. I mean, really. And I understand, like I said, we went from twenty-nine million dollars to twenty-one or twenty-two. I'm just saying, you know, I couldn't sit up here and be on the insurance knowing that I could possibly afford insurance elsewhere, but that's, that's just me, I just couldn't do it.
Well, on that insurance, and I understand there has been an informal request to raise five percent, it goes back to, five percent, looking at the tiers, and I've ran the numbers, because not everybody's on a family plan, we have someone single, just looking at the tiers alone, a five percent with, just on, not the high deductible healthcare plan, just on the PPO alone was about two hundred seventy-some thousand dollars. So looking at an increase, the high deductible healthcare, say three hundred thousand dollars, you would generate an additional three hundred thousand dollars. Well, in six months to one year, or a little longer, when you have the increase in healthcare, MRIs, prescriptions, doctor visits, everything goes up, that's gone. So when, when the employees added that, received three hundred thousand, it's done. And so unfortunately, you know, just the moves that's, that's happened at your last council meeting, those true hundred thousand dollar moves are forever, they're done. And when you look at the clinic and how we're having a decent year, so to speak, I don't understand, when we look at that, I understand you see nine hundred thousand, you see it's a big bill nonetheless, but the employees, we directed the employees to utilize the clinic by not only increasing their, their contributions on a monthly rate, but we also had to direct them to utilize the clinic via high deduct, their deduct was being raised and out-of-pocket being raised. It's proven that it worked because the monthly city schools did not drive their plan and they did not utilize the clinic at this time like we did. So what, the changes that we spent many, many, many hours on last year to do this and implement it for 2014, it's working. So I would like, with James, I mean, people need to, I would, would request that the council recognize that fact, that those changes have brought about a different insurance balance at this particular part of the year.
Larry, I appreciate what you're saying. I went to many, many meetings along with the personnel director on the plan and I believed in it then, I believe in it now, and the fruits of it is being demonstrated through the participation rate and the savings. Once again, I sent out three different letters, starting in, I believe, March or April this year, to every department head, elected official. Tried, I mean, I shouldn't have to try to explain where we're at financially. Asking them to identify, so we wouldn't have to talk about the things that, some of the things that we're doing. Trying to identify where we could cut. And I got very, very, very few recommendations on how we could trim their own budgets. In fact, after three very pointed letters requesting help, the budget they submitted back to the council for approval was two or three million dollars over what last year's budget was. So I'm not sure if they still understand or if they're just trying to think we're just trying to trim the budget. We're not just trying to trim the budget. What we're faced with, unless we come up with enough funds, reductions to 2014, we can exhaust a rainy day, we can borrow as much money as we can legally borrow, and we may not make payroll in the first part of the year. That's what we're looking at. So, once again, we are appreciative of the commissioners' efforts, we are appreciative of everybody's efforts, but we still haven't got where we need to be yet, so we need to continue that conversation and sure as any participation in the council has to go with what that bottom line is.
Well, not to sound argumentative, but our particular budget was increased, because it's a budget and we budgeted what we knew we needed. Maybe a little high on inmates, but with the projection that we had going back just several, three or four months ago with population hitting a normal of fifty-five housed out every day, we asked for, I believe, five hundred thousand last year, we got cut to two fifty, we're short at least one sixty to make it to the year end. We don't have any money whatsoever paid for housing our prisoners right now. So Patty asked about, what do we ask? We asked what we need to budget, just like you would have home. It takes fifty dollars deep, it takes fifty dollars deep. So we were being point-blank to the penny what we thought with those projections running in December all the way up to February, March, that we were really housing out, that it could hit as high as seven hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, and, and, I mean, that didn't break away, last year, you budgeted, or we budgeted for you two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollars and you came back a few times out of necessity, I understand that.
Right. So I mean, we just thought, well, budget, let's tell them what we need. Same thing, you know, a lot of, the big part of our budget, we can't control, our commissioner's budget, we pay, you know...
I really do. Each department head has told me a similar story and frankly, they're, they're more correct than they are not. I mean, they need X amount of dollars to provide X amount of services to the public. That number's decreasing, so as James said, at some point, service is going to have to decrease as well. And so we're going to continue to try to make ends meet in the, in the most acceptable way. Thank you.
Mr. President, I just want to remind the council that right now, we currently have affordable insurance for our employees. And according to the Affordable Healthcare Act, if we do not offer our employees the affordable insurance, then there will be a huge fine to the county. So I just wanted to remind them of that.
Well, you might want to come to the council.
I'll be here.
Okay, we'll move on to monthly and weekly reports. Everybody's got the one from Ways and Measures and also from the clerk of, clerk of court. Move on to payment of claims and the amount of one million. Move on to payment of claims in the amount of $1,53,746.66. Second. Have a motion in second for approval. Denise, call the roll, please.
Ms. Riggan?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
At last, do we have any questions, comments, anything, other business? If not, entertain a motion to recess.
So move.
Second.
A motion in second to recess. Denise, call the roll.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Riggan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes, we're going to recess.